So I'm gonna call the meeting of BUHS number six to order at 7:02 on August 21st, 2017. And we're gonna start with, as we do, with the clerk's report and approval of the minutes from our August 7th meeting, assuming everybody saw those.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a communication from Lori Cartwright regarding the minutes.
Okay.
She would like them to be amended to reflect that she made a statement regarding the length of time she's been on the school board, including the Brattleboro School Board, and how difficult it was for her to tender her resignation.
Okay.
It was 11 years, by the way, between here and town.
Between town and here?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there a motion? So we'll do it as amended, amended, yeah. Sorry, second.
Second, though, I've got, I've got a few minutes that I had. One, oops, I'm looking at the wrong seven minutes. Okay, the right seven minutes. One, I didn't know if we should note that at 5:00 PM we had a retreat, so that the business meetings started at 7:02, but that, that we had a retreat that started about 5:00, which sounds the scheduled time. So I thought that the minutes should reflect that.
Okay.
Also, going down under WSASU Finance, which said they also discussed classified staff negotiations, I should say, they also discussed and endorsed certified and classified staff. So insert and endorsed certified and. And then, there was one other. Oh, I think on the welcoming that you had, I'm sure you'll talk about again today, you talked about both the 29th and the 30th. The 29th being ninth graders and seventh graders.
Certified and what?
They also discussed and endorsed certified and then classified staff negotiations.
And classified.
Yeah, that's already in there, classified staff negotiations.
All right, where is having the minutes?
Second page.
Second page, right after all the warrants.
Oh, after the warrant, okay.
So it's just.
Oh, it's the SSU finance.
Yeah, it's the SSU finance.
I'm trying to remember.
Oh, not your finance, no.
Okay.
No, the SU finance, I mean our finance, but we're all our, it's got, yeah, the WSASU.
Sorry, that was my bad.
Yeah, that's okay. No, it's fine. So we discussed and endorsed both the certified and classified staff negotiations.
Could I make just a slight amendment to the amendment and recall the planning session as opposed to a retreat?
Yes, that's fine.
Makes it sound less like we went and played golf and...
Yeah, it's true, we did not play golf.
There was no golf. That is true. Okay.
You have planning sessions.
Right. Any other corrections, deletions, what have you to the minutes?
I just have one comment. I hope they get somebody else to take these minutes pretty soon.
I, I know that that's been posted as well, to hopefully hire somebody.
I mean, I sent an email out and in the end I said the kudos to Ruth. I mean, it's just, it's incredible to do all of those minutes.
It's just not my thing, but I'll do the best I can.
Oh, yeah, I'm a great job.
Definitely appreciate it. All right, so all in favor of approving the minutes as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose or extensions? Okay. Are there any communications to come, other communications to come before the board's meeting? No? Okay. Nothing else under the clerk's report? Let's see, recognition of groups and individual visitors. You do have a visitor?
I'm the visitor.
You are the visitor? You want to introduce yourself again?
I'm Sally Ann Penoi and moved to Brattleboro in November.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to enter consent agenda?
Still moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Finance, Building and Transportation.
Well, rarely can we say this, but Finance has not met since the last meeting. We will however meet tomorrow morning at 8:00 here at the school for a facility tour and at the, at the front, front door, I guess, right?
Mm-hmm.
8:00 tomorrow morning.
Room 106B is set aside for you to meet afterward.
Okay, oh, thank you. Great. WSASU Finance Committee.
Okay, we met on the 17th and did, it's one thing that we're trying to upgrade is putting on, posting better minutes and the agendas are, have already been posted, so the last, the last one, so I, and, and we're rotating, I don't want you to get any ideas here, but we're rotating a minute taking in the, in the Finance Committee.
Sounds good.
Yeah. That's because nobody was willing to be, to take minutes full-time, so that's, that's what we did, but if you're still willing, anyways. So after we agreed to that, Kim Price was appointed and as clerk. And also, Alice Loffler and I decided to act as co-chairs of the committee, Alice being the chair of the SU Committee, though I'd be primarily responsible for running meetings. We approved warrants and payrolls, and these ones that are approved will be on the WSASU website. Then we spent the bulk of the time, as I thought that we were talking about the Finance Committee's roles and responsibilities. And we're gonna be meeting again October 4th, just prior to a full WSASU meeting. We have a BUHS meeting before that, because we have to make sure that we'll have voting members at that. In fact, we'll be inviting all members to come to that, because we'll be talking about, almost like a planning session there, is just how meetings should be run and, and respect for, for each other and how we, you know, disagree and learn to disagree in a good constructive way. So we will be, so we, so we had sort of a, a, a planning session like that as well, and also responding to the WSASU in terms of defining the role of the SU Finance Committee, that we spent some time looking at that. And generally, we, we looked at, one is renaming, instead of just Finance Committee, you know, suggesting something like the, the Executive Finance Committee, because we've traditionally done other, other sorts of things, and we spent a fair amount of time outlining those. And we'll present on the 4th a more detailed outline, but, you know, looking at the roles and responsibilities, looking in terms of financial oversight, in terms of warrants and those sorts of things, as well as developing budgets, looking at more executive functions, WSASU Board Governance and Oversight. And one thing that we're gonna try to do more on is to be what I have called an information hub, but I think we're calling it a Communications Facilitator, but just to make sure, and part of my report here, because our meetings are, the board meetings, the SU Finance Committee meetings tend not to be televised, is to make sure that that information, that information gets out besides being posted on the, on the website. So as different things come in that are interest to the whole SU in terms of, you know, energy, you know, solar energy types of things and those sorts of things, that we get, get information out and get feedback from the, from the boards, and then what helps from the public as, as well. So that's, again, on the 4th, the SU Finance Committee will, will review our recommendations and then make the recommendations later that evening at, I don't know, is that 7:00? I'm not sure where, where, and where, do we know where the SU meeting?
I don't think it's been scheduled yet.
Scheduled yet?
Yeah.
So we, we still have some, some time for that. Oh, yeah, we've got a couple more meetings here before we get there. This is only August. And that was it.
Great, thanks.
That's what we did.
Excellent, okay. Planning and Policy.
Has not met, and I believe it's just down to you and me at this point.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that we'll need to, once we have a, a full board slate again, figure out, because Lori had agreed to be Chair of that, and so we'll have to replace that sometime.
Ricky on that. We do have a Finance Committee Policy for the Policy Committee to consider, I don't know if you already did that or?
I knew that there was something potentially coming, I just hadn't seen it yet.
All right, so maybe?
I really question a copy of it, because I'm too wild to read these days.
Yep.
And I have not seen a copy yet.
Okay, so will email?
Email us at least the copies, I mean.
To, to?
Just to us, so we'll.
Sound good.
We'll talk with it.
Yeah. Teacher Curriculum Committee met this morning and we approved the hiring of the last staff position open, right?
Yes.
For a part-time nurse, so we approved that hiring this morning. So we are fully staffed in all three schools, which is great. BAMS Committee. Do we have a meeting? Does it matter? I think so. WRCC?
We haven't met since the last one.
No, I don't believe so.
And WSASU Act 46 Study Committee has not met, but we're meeting this Thursday here 6:00, I think, I remember, but, so we're meeting this week. Everyone's welcome. Anything else for consent agenda? See, nothing. All in favor of approving consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Pose or extensions? All right. Administrative Report, so let's start the fire and then work our way. All right. Hi, everyone.
Brief report tonight. We're certainly excited, we're gonna begin school, teachers are back Thursday, and today was first teacher orientation, new teacher orientation, and there's some work training tomorrow for them. Teachers have in service Thursday, Friday, Monday, and then seventh graders are back on Tuesday, the 29th, and eighth graders, 7th and 8th on the 30th. Steve has a similar schedule. Teams are gonna be doing kind of like either Pollock Ditters or like Ice Cream Socials. The four core teams are gonna welcome back families, four separate nights. One team's doing it the 24th and then the 29th, 30th, 31st. There's different teams every night inviting families in, so it's, I'm looking forward to seeing them all. Let's see. Couple of things that have happened recently that I'm proud of. The Humanities Camp finished up the summer learning program, and that was really well done this year, and I wanted to, Jenny Rockwood and Mary Linney both ran it for the first time. It used to be done by a couple of other teachers. Nancy Goodhue and Julian Egan had done it for years, and Mary and Jenny did a really, a great job. I was really impressed. And in case you missed it, Mary Linney was, the reformer runs this Best of Brattleboro, and Mary was voted best teacher, which was, that's a pretty cool honor, given that you're talking a huge area that people vote, you know, Twin Valley and Leland Gray and Brattleboro and other surrounding towns, I'm sure Hinsale, so Mary was, and those are just random votes, pick a teacher and vote, so I'm sure there were many that were nominated, she got the most votes, so that was pretty neat, and there'll be a little ad run for her. I don't know if it's been published yet, but coming up soon, hopefully. Let's see. George Berniger, he's, he's, works in the IT Department and just did an amazing job this summer, I just wanted to recognize him for organizing our Chromebooks, and I'd asked him to make the process a lot smoother for us for this year, the first two years, first, the last few years have been a little challenging getting all the Chromebooks ready for kids, it's all fairly new to us, and, and he just made it a very smooth process so far. He's handing over to Paul this week, but done a great job, and I think it's gonna go flawlessly this year. Let's see. Two other events that have happened recently, the middle school leadership up at Landmark College, that went really well. BAMS was well represented, I think there were 20, 24, 25 students who attended, and Gabrielle Araccio was the leadership, kind of the school leadership rep. Tom and I also went, had a great time with the kids, got to know a lot of incoming seventh graders, and we created some goals for the year to work on with the student leadership, so that went well. Landmark's great to us, that was something that Ron had created years ago and kind of kept it going, and Lyle will be taking over, but Ron was there this year because it's one of his favorite things. Made great weather and it was, it was perfect. And last but not least, and Steve might touch on this, but we're gonna have, we had a summer luncheon for the custodial summer, summer support staff last week, and it went well, I thought, and my admin assistant, Jen Minor, did, did a lot of work kind of preparing, setting it all up, and then the, we were really happy to have as many people show up and enjoy a meal, so. That's what I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Who's the next?
Sure.
So as Keith mentioned, we did honor our summer staff, and there's a lot of people that work all summer long. It's not just our custodian, Joyce Manning, our bookkeeper, works all summer, and, you know, can imagine what July first is like when the new fiscal year starts for Joyce, and so she does a great job of keeping everything moving, you know, along with Jim Stacy, Heather Harrison, and, you know, Kathy Vaness and Jen Minor are here as well, so, you know, we're glad that they're here. And they certainly serve as everything from front door greeters to arbitrators, so we're glad they're here. You've all seen, the building looks fantastic, you know, our custodians do an incredible job, you know, even last week, they were out repairing tiles and touching up walls and doing all that stuff. One of the significant things they did this year is we moved our safety office, which traditionally has been from the building. We've chosen to move that to the old TV studio this year, and that's because it's a more central location. From that position, the safety staff can get to BAMS, to the career center, and so it's a much, we think, a better position school-wide for that office to be. We've also moved our school research officer down there as well, and so, you know, they're, it's right on the corner, right by the library, so it's kind of a nice central location for them to be. Along the same lines, we have entered another contract this year with the sheriff for school research officer services. You know, Mark Anderson has been our SRO, he was our SRO for the last year. He will start this year, there's some talk he has other new duties, so he may be transitioning out of that, but I will keep the board apprised as that happens, you know, we'll certainly vet whoever comes in to take, to take that place if anybody does. As Ricky mentioned, we've retained the services of Susan Mello as our part-time nurse, and you know, Susan came highly recommended from a lot of people in the community, so we're pretty excited, she'll be here part-time. And though it's part-time, it's still a critical time, because what she does is that allows the nurses to staff their facility for the entire day, allows them to let people have lunch, allows them to work really hard during that very busy Block III time, and remember, our nurses do serve three schools, so they, they do work pretty hard. We are opening a freshman on the 29th, and we're kind of excited to welcome the class of 2021. You know, periodically throughout the year, I've been giving tours to ninth graders, and it's always kind of great to walk around and have them kind of figure out where their classes are and kind of get to know them. And I want to recognize the work that Kate Margitis has done of getting ready as well. She's spent a lot of time making contact with parents, making contact with students, everything we can do to get a smooth transition. The night of the 29th, we are gonna welcome all of our parents and students back to the high school for our Chromebook distribution night. This will be the fourth year of our Chromebook distribution. We did manage to get seniors' Chromebooks last year, but this is the fourth official year that we're having a Chromebook go out to all of our students. One of our tasks this year, Karen Chernowski, our integration person, will take the lead in this, is to really kind of assess how are we using technology now, you know, how is each teacher using it, are there things we should do better, are there things that we're doing too much of? Because as I say every year at the Chromebook night, a Chromebook is a poor substitute for a good teacher, and so, you know, we want to make sure that people know that really the heart and soul of this school are the teachers and the staff. We'll welcome all of our students back on the 30th. I've, I've had the pleasure of walking around and seeing practices start. This morning, I'm sorry, this afternoon, it felt like morning because the eclipse had just ended, I got to watch the field hockey team run their mile, and went over on Sawyer Field to check out the soccer program, and there are a lot of soccer players this year, which is nice to see. So, you know, good, robust crowds out there, and we're looking forward to a lot of great games this year. Open House is September 14th, and it's gonna be a traditional, as we've done in the past, come in and meet the teachers' night, kind of run through your child's schedule. Another thing we're offering this year is a new course for ninth graders, and it's a mouthful to say, it's called YATS, and it's not Yahtzee. That stands for Youth and Adults Transforming Schools Together. And it's sponsored by an organization, a nonprofit in the state called Up for Learning, and we've got 15 ninth graders in this course, and Ben Lor is the teacher. And this, in this course, students do research on school change, and what they do is they go out, they do their own research, collect their own data, and based on what they find, they come up and they propose ways to transform school. The hope is that, you know, as the students kind of lead this process with Ben guiding them, that the change they come up with is something substantial, you know, not let's change the, let's change the colors of the school, but something real, something meaningful. And I'm looking forward to working with those students this year and working with Ben to kind of see where we can take that. I'm hoping at some point that they will be able to attend school board meetings, as student council does, to kind of get a pulse on what's going on. And we chose ninth graders because those were our students that have four years of investment in the building and in the programs here, so we chose them very deliberately. And last but not least, Keith reminded me, we do have a Best of Brattleboro winner as well, Coach Chet Chico was selected as coach, and so it's kind of an honor for Chad to get that. And that's it, and this is what we both look like two days before school starts. It's gonna be different, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. I just, this is maybe more a question for Finance Committee tomorrow, but I see that we did actually recently get another bunch of Chromebooks, 100 with 60 licenses. I wasn't quite sure, because I thought we had, is that just replacing the 25% now? Because we've got every class set, right?
Right. I, and I'm not, I will double check, but I'm fairly certain that those 100 Chromebooks that we bought this year are being used to supplement ones we purchased last year, and those together will be given to the class of 2021, but I, I will double, I can tell you tomorrow at Finance for sure.
But all the classes now?
Yes. Every BUHS student in BAMS has a Chromebook, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Frank, Central Office.
Okay, well, I'm primarily here to talk about the withdrawal agreement with Vernon, so that's a little later in the agenda.
That's it? Nothing else? Okay.
And I don't have anything as board chair that's not already on our agenda, except for I will just remind everybody that next week, Tuesday and Wednesday, if you're available in the morning to come and help greet students, it's a fun thing to do, to see some of them really excited and some of them kind of nervous, and some of them wanting to be back in bed, and, and you'll see all of that. Some of them gripping Dunkin' Donuts pretty intensely, but, so if you're available next Tuesday or Wednesday or both mornings, please come by and pick a door and greet some students, it's a good time.
All right, so let's move to unfinished business, which, the only thing on unfinished business is the Vernon separation agreement, which last time, last time we met, two weeks ago, we talked about it, everyone got a copy at that point, and it's very similar to the agreement that we agreed on 18 months ago, about?
About 18 months ago, something like that, where we voted, where we had that meeting, those of you that remember, in Vernon, actually at the, in the Vernon Library, to, voted to let Vernon leave the district, BUHS number six district.
So I'll just open it up to questions or thoughts that anybody might have related to that.
Basically, this just falls Act 49 into the agreement at this point.
Yeah, right. Prior to July, with the legislature having Act 46 in place, the districts involved in the merger discussions didn't meet the criteria for moving, leaving forward, but Act 49 opened the door that essentially modified statute, which allowed Vernon to, to propose this again and allows the merger to be considered by the voters, which is to be discussed Thursday night, as Ricky has mentioned, by the study committee, so that's, that's to be determined Thursday.
Just one, question one, is, is basically the same as the agreement from 18 months ago, and one thing that I saw was in, I don't remember what was in that one or not, because I remember bringing it up, that, you know, they waive all rights to property, but we waive any going after them for debt. And I noticed, and I, I know I asked that question 18 months ago, but it, it says here, I'm just pointing out, that this agreement shall not affect the calculation of tuition in accordance with blah, 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 so that the, particularly the bond issue that's out there, that's calculated within tuition that we charge to any student coming in.
That's right, yeah.
So even though they're no longer, would no longer be on sort of the bottom line of the bond payments, they are contributing to bond payments.
Right. So when the Finance Committee reviews the tuition calculation, when we do our annual budget, so we, we look at all costs to operate the school, the state does say that you're setting a, a, a regular education tuition rate, so they exclude things like special education, transportation, food service, but they do not exclude debt service. So, so the principal salary, the cost of heat and lights, the, the little bit of word expense, and principal and interest are all part of the costs that go into setting a tuition rate. So any district that pays a tuition rate is contributing toward, toward the payment of the 1.6 million principal payment, and there's another about 300,000 in interest, and those are scheduled, as you probably remember, to mature in 2023. We're gonna be planning the 2019 budget in just a few weeks, and the statewide plan for education is effective at this point, according to the statute Fiscally or 20, so it, it won't be long in that timeline where this debt will be fully paid off. Right now, it's 11.2 million, and, you know, 1.6 per year, it, it goes down pretty, pretty substantially.
Excellent. Any other questions on the separation agreement?
So essentially, what we need to do, because there is action needed, is that we need to have a vote to authorize me to sign on behalf of the board, BUHS number six as the chair, to allow Vernon to leave, and Mike Hubert has already signed from the Vernon side of it as the chair of the Vernon Board, and then that would, then take care of that, so.
I move that we authorize the board chair to sign the Vernon separation agreement as currently written.
Is there a second?
Same.
Any other questions, thoughts, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose or extensions? All right, excellent. Let's hope for that before we go today. Great, excellent. Anything else under unfinished business for our meeting tonight?
Under, so we have something under new business, which is, essentially is the school board vacancy. So as we talked about last, at our last meeting, and Lori informed us that Lori is leaving the board, because she's gonna be out of the area for a few months, so she is resigned from position on the BUHS Board from Brattleboro. It has been posted in the
It has been posted in the comments, I believe, and some other places. Barb Norkowski at Central Office is handling getting that posted. And it will go to the town, Brattleboro Town School Board. Anybody who's interested will make a letter to them and then they will interview whoever and appoint somebody. The way the statute works, and Frank, I think you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I understand it is that whoever's appointed in Lori's position is appointed just until the election's in March. And then she, or he or she or whoever would have to run for the remaining time on that seat. So if she was in the first year of her three-year seat, there'd still be two years left after March and that person would have to run at that point if they wanted to stick with the Board once they're appointed. So, one of the things that I did, I asked Barb to do, and she put together a certificate and I was thinking Lori was going to be here, but in just in recognition and appreciation of her dedication to the Brattleboro Union High School District Number Six during her seven years of service to this district. So there's a certificate for her, which I'll make sure that she gets. She unfortunately is not here this evening to receive it in person, but I, we put that together. So, and Lyle and I both signed that to go to Lori, to thank her for her time on the Board.
Plus years in the.
Yeah, plus she had, plus she had about four years on the Town Board. As was pointed out earlier, she's got about eleven years altogether between the two boards, so. Anyway, so if you know somebody who wants to, would like to join us from Brattleboro, they need to send a letter to the Town School Board and then they will make an appointment at some point once they have somebody to do that with. All right. As to anything else for new business, yes?
Our next meeting is September fourth, which is Labor Day.
Yes. And historically, we have not had a second meeting in September unless necessary. And I can't recall it ever being necessary because things are still new in the school year and we still haven't dived into much. So if we skipped our next planned meeting, which would be the fourth, which is Labor Day, school's not in session, then our next meeting would be on September eighteenth, which is the third Monday in September. I'd like to propose that unless anybody has an objection. Administration, you think that'll work for you? Is that a problem? And again, if something comes up between now and then and we need to put together some sort of meeting, we can do that, but. So unless, now I see the objection, so we'll just plan September eighteenth, that Monday night. It'll be our regular meeting at seven o'clock.
Here.
Yes.
I don't normally ask questions, but I'm, I'm curious because maybe the public is curious. That Vernon agreement that you just had, how does that affect the composition of your School Board? Because currently there's a Vernon rep.
There's, currently there's a Vernon rep.
So I'm just curious, how, does that change the concept?
And my understanding is, is that the Vernon rep would stay with us through the remainder? There's a, there's a time period where they would be staying on and they would not officially be leaving this Board until a date in the future. So it's not, okay, the Vernon rep is no longer present. There's a, there's a, there's a sort of a, a grace period where that person is still here before the separation agreement goes into full effect to, to transition.
And this refers to June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen?
Nineteen. Yeah, so there's still some time.
Coincides with the State Board plan as part of Act Forty-Six.
So does this mean Vernon is still part of BUHS number six until?
Yep.
June thirtieth, twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen, yeah.
I don't normally ask questions, but this is something I thought the public may.
It's a, it's a good, it's a great question.
Interested in knowing.
Yeah, the agreement says that on or before June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as determined by the State Board of Education, Vernon shall relinquish, release, blah, blah, blah. So that's, that's the date that's, that's in the agreement.
That's a great question. Thank you for asking.
Thank you for answering.
Yeah. All right. Is there anything else to come before the Board this evening?
Mr. Chairman, with being no more business to come before the Board, I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all so much. We're adjourned.
Very good.
So here it is.